Hare 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 Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare 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 Krishna, Sudhanav Pranam, all devotees, thank you for joining in. We'll start with the prayers. Om Jnana Kimran Dasya, Jnana Anjanah, Shalathaya. Shakshun Militam Yena, Tasmay Sri Gurave Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Manohu Vistam Stapitam Yena Bhutale. Swamirupa Kadhamayyam Dadatishva Padantikam. Vandeham Sri Guru, Sri Uta Padakamalam Sri Gurun Vaisnavamcham. Sri Rupam Sagrijatam Sahaganargunatan Vitam Tamsujivam. Sadvaitam Savadutam Parijanasahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Badan Sahavana Lalita Sri Vishakkan Vitamcham. Namum Vishnu Badhaya Krishna Preesthayabhutale, Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Naaminay. Namaste Saraswade Devae Gauravani Pracharinay, Nirdviseshu Shunyavadi, Paschati Resha Tharinay. Namum Mahavadanyaya Krishna Prema Pradhayate, Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gauradushyam Namaha. Panchatvata Atmakam Krishnam Bhaktarupa Swarupakam, Bhaktavataram Bhaktakyam Namami Bhaktashaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagatpate, Gopesha Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusute. Tapta Kanchana Gaurangi, Radhe Vrinda Vaneshwari, Rishabhano Sute Devi Pranamami Hari Priye. Vancha Kalpatarubiyascha Kripas Hindugheyevacha, Patitha Nam Paavane Bhyo Vaisnave Bhyo Namu Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityaananda, Sri Advaitakadadhara, Shri Vasadigaur Bhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaya Tadali, Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaya Tatbhaktaya Namu Namaha. Mukam Karoti Vachalam Pangum Langayate Girim, Vyakrabhatamaham Vandeh Sri Gurundinatarinam. Paramanandam Adamam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Mysuram Harihi Om Tatsat. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, dear devotees, Sudhanav Pranam, thank you all for joining in. Today we're going to start teachings of Lord Chaitanya, the next after introduction. We are now going to start with the mission of Lord Chaitanya. So what is the mission of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, right? Sri Krishna Chaitanya, Radha Krishna Nahi Anya. So we saw how in the introduction section that Lord Krishna has appeared as Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, taking the mood and complexion of Shrimati Radharani. But what is the mission? We saw three internal reasons also why Krishna appeared as Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. And then we also saw Yajnai Sankirtana Praer, Yajanti Hisu Meetha Sah. Krishna Varanam, Tushakrishnam, Sangopangastraparshadam. Where Krishna is appearing as Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, but he is the same Lord Krishna, but he is not in Krishna Varanam. He is not in Krishna's complexion of Shama or the blackish rain cloud color. He is in the form of Gaurah, he is in the form of, he is in the, he is in the golden color, he is in the golden complexion. The complexion of Shrimati Radharani. Krishna Varanam Tushakrishnam and who are his weapons? Sangopangastraparshadam, his weapons are his associates. And what does he come for the mission for Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is given in these words. Yajnai Sankirtana Praer, right? He has come to inaugurate the Hare Krishna Mahamantra or he is come to inaugurate the Hari Nava Sankirtana. Yajnai Sankirtana Praer and Yajanti Hisu Meetha Sah. And the most intelligent people, what will they do? They will actually take up this part of Krishna consciousness. So in this way, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is described by Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, by Shilpa Prabhupada in this chapter. Wherein the exclusive focus, very small chapter, exclusive focus is given on Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's mood and mission. Yeah, so let me quickly share my screen, devotees who want to read may raise your hand. And then we will understand Lord Chaitanya's mission today. Okay. All right, Lord Chaitanya's mission. Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu instructed his disciples to write books on the science of Krishna. A task which his followers have continued to carry out down to the present day. The elaborations and expositions on the philosophy taught by Lord Chaitanya are in fact most voluminous, exacting and consistent due to the system of disciplic succession. Although Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is widely renowned as a scholar in his youth, he left only eight verses called Shikshastika, very important, only eight verses were left by Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. These eight verses clearly reveal his mission and precepts. The supremely valuable prayers are translated here. So here Prabhupada is not quoted the verses, but Prabhupada has given the meaning of those verses. Right, so as we read the meaning, we will also contemplate and reflect on the verses also. Okay, so the first verse, Malamathaji go ahead. Glory to the Sri Krishna Sankirtana. Mathaji, are you able to unmute yourself?
Hey Krishna, yes now it's unmuting, thank you.
Hare Krishna, yes Mathaji, go ahead.
Glory to the Sri Krishna Sankirtan which cleanses the heart of all the dust accumulated for years and extinguishes the fire of conditional life of repeated birth and death. This Sankirtan movement is the prime benediction for humanity at large because it spreads the rays of the benediction moon. It is the life of all transcendental knowledge. It increases the ocean of transcendental bliss and it enables us to fully taste the nectar for which we are always anxious. Shall I continue?
Yeah, I will, you can continue, but let me just try to elaborate, the only the, we will see only the essence of the, what is given here, right? All glories to the Sri Krishna Sankirtana. So Param Vijayate, Sri Krishna Sankirtanam, Ceto Darpanam Arjunam. That's what is cleansing the mirror of the heart, right? When we cleanse the mirror of our heart, then what happens? Then the holy name, the heart which is currently filled with lust, anger, greed, pride and illusion gets replaced with Seva Bhav. The Bhoga Vriti that is there in the heart right now, that gets cleansed. And in its place, Seva Vriti will arise in our heart. And when that Seva Vriti arises, then it extinguishes the fire of sense gratification. It extinguishes the fire of conditional life. It extinguishes the fire of repeated birth and death, right? Shreyakairava Chandrika Avitaranam and then it expresses the raids of the benediction moon. So when the fire is extinguished, already there is little bit of coolness. But when the moon of the cooling rays of the holy name spreads in the heart, then what happens? It increases the coolness of the heart. And then what happens? Vidya Vadu Jivanam, right? Just like a wife follows a husband, like that. Vidya Vadu Jivanam, the transcendental knowledge will follow such a person who has taken to this process of chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, Vidya Vadu Jivanam. And then what happens? Once knowledge comes, then Anandamudivardhanam Pratipadam Purana Amritasvadanam. Then one slowly starts relishing the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. One gets taste in chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. One gets bliss in chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Vidya Vadu Jivanam, Anandamudivardhanam, Ananda means bliss. Purana Amritasvadanam, one experiences the transcendental nectarian bliss. Purana Amritasvadanam, Sarvatma Asnapanam, Param Vijayate Sri Krishna Sankirtanam. So all glories to such a Sankirtana movement which is going to take us back from back to Godhead. That means it's going to relieve us from the repeated birth and death by actually spreading the rays of benediction moon in our heart, extinguishing the fire of material existence and increasing the ocean of our transcendental bliss. Okay, yes Mathaji, go ahead, second verse. Okay, we'll just recite the verse and then we'll go to the translation. Nam Nam Akari Bahuda, right? The first verse is talks about the glories of the holy name, Hari Nava Sankirtan, Param Vijayate Sri Krishna Sankirtanam. And then in the second verse, Prabhupada is explaining how Chaitanya Mahaprabhu has given us the holy name which can render all benedictions. And there are no, not even any hard and fast rules there, right? Nam Nam Akari Bahuda Nija Sarva Shaktish. The Lord, you know, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu has invested all his energies. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu himself is most merciful incarnation of the Lord. And he has invested all of the transcendental potencies in the holy name. Kalikale Namarupa Krishna Avatar. Krishna is incarnated in Kaluga as Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is Channa Avatar. But the open avatar in this age of Kali is Lord Krishna is incarnating in the form of his holy name. That is why it is said, the holy name is even more merciful than Lord Krishna himself. Because in Kalikale Namarupa, in the form of his name, Lord is incarnated in Kaluga. And in this name, he has invested all the transcendental energies. Nija Sarva Shaktish, all the transcendental energies are invested in the name. Tatrarpita Nemi Taasvarane Nikala, there are no niams, there are no rules in chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Eta Krsi Tabakrpa Bhagavan Maaapi Durdevam Idrisham Ihajani Nanu Raghah. Right, by simply chanting Hare Krishna, we are in direct association with Krishna. But Durdevam, unfortunate we are. Why we are unfortunate? Durdevam Idrisham Ihajani Nanu Raghah. We don't have any Raga, we don't have any taste in chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Yeah, so that is the second verse, so Mathaji go ahead. Okay, Harjit Mathaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mathaji. Oh my Lord, your holy name alone can render all benediction to living beings. And thus you have hundreds and millions of names like Krishna and Govinda. In this transcendental name, you have invested all your transcendental energies. There are not even hard and fast rules for chanting these names. Oh my Lord, out of kindness you enable us to easily approach you by your holy names. But I am so unfortunate that I have no attraction for them.
Yeah, so unfortunate, I have no attraction for them, that is Nanu Raghah, right? Durdevam Idrisham Ihajani Nanu Raghah. The third verse is very, very common, very famous, very, very important verse that we have to string around our neck, right? Just we have, it's like we have our kanti mala, right? Which we have, which we should always have around our neck. Similarly, we should string this verse like our kanti mala around our neck. What is that verse? Trinadapi Shuni Chena Taroriva Sahishnuna Amanina Maanadena Kirtanya Sadahari. That we all want to do Kirtanya Sadahari, that is the goal of life. Always remember Krishna and never forget Krishna. And how can we do that? Only when we chant the Hare Krishna Mahamantra constantly. And how will we chant the Hare Krishna Mahamantra constantly? When we have these qualities. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu himself is saying that Trinadapi Shuni Chena, we need to be more humble than a blade of grass. Taroriva Sahishnuna, taror means tree, we have to develop tolerance much, much more than a tree, right? The tree tolerates so much, you know, it stands high in heat and cold and rains. Yet in the hot sun, right? To the carpenter or to the woodcutter, right? Who comes to cut the tree also. The tree gives shade, right? In the hot sun, the, the person who is going to cut the tree also takes shelter in the shade of the tree itself, right? So the tree not only tolerates but forgives and also serves. Even though, even those, even that person who has come to actually cut the tree, right? So that is the kind of tolerance exhibited by the tree. And Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is saying more tolerant than a tree, right? So that means if somebody talks ill of us immediately, we want to retaliate, we want to shout back, we want to justify ourselves. So that is not tolerance, right? So Trinadapi Shuni Chena Humblathan A Grass, Taroriva Sahishnuna More Tolerant Than A Tree. Amanina Maanadena Offering All Respects To Others Without Expecting Any Respect And Return, right? So his only Radhanath Swamiraj was mentioning in one class, right? As long as you want, want to give respect to others, we can always be happy and satisfied and blissful. Because who can stop us from giving respecting, from giving respect to others? But if you're expecting respect and if you don't get the respect, we'll get frustrated. Do we have any control whether others will respect us or not? So whether we want to be blissful or we want to be frustrated is in our hands. If we expect respect from others, we will be frustrated. But if you want to give respect to others, we can always be blissful. So that's what Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is saying here. Amanina Maanadena, when we offer all respects to others without expecting any respect and return. In that state of mind, we can chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra constantly. Because we will be blissful, we will be peaceful and in that state of mind, it is easy to focus on the holy names of the Lord. Okay, so we'll read, Rohimathaji, go ahead, one should chant the holy name of the Lord.
One should chant the holy name of the Lord in a humble state of mind, thinking oneself lower than the straw in the street. One should be more tolerant than a tree, devoid of all sense of false prestige and should be ready to offer all respect to others. In such a state of mind, one can chant the holy name of the Lord constantly. Mathaji, just I wanted to say this, Radhanath Maharaj in any of his lectures, he always says this shloka, it's just an observation. Every lecture he will say this shloka, Radhanath Maharaj.
Yeah, so yeah, this is, this is what we want to develop. This is the most important quality that we need to develop if we want to chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra constantly. Okay, then the next one is. Na Dhannam Na Janam Na Sundarin, Kavita Amva Jagadeeshakam Yay. Mahajanmanee Janmanishwade Bhavatad Bhaktir Ahitukitwee, Na Dhannam, right? What is, what do we want, right? Generally we do things so that we, we satisfy some purpose, right? We are not chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra so that we may, we may get a lot of money, we may get a good job, we may, we may get a, you know, some promotion or a higher salary etcetera. That should not be the motive behind chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra. So Chaitanya Mahaprabhu himself is saying, first he is saying, you chant Hare Krishna, that will, that will cleanse your heart. I have invested all my energies in the holy name, so please chant the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. And then he is saying, you will be able to chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra constantly if you develop the qualities of humility, tolerance, offering all respects to others, don't expect any respect and return. And then he is saying, what should be the goal of your chanting, right? Don't chant to get, you know, some name fame glory, some higher salary, some better job, some, you know, a good husband or a beautiful wife etcetera. It's, it's like, it's like going to a rich man or a king and asking for some ashes, right? His only Jyapitakaswamy Maraj was giving a class wherein he was saying, right? When a rich man is, you know, giving a lot of benedictions and, you know, when you're allowed to go and take a boon from the rich man, you're not going to go and ask him for ashes, right? You will rather ask him for something that's valuable. Similarly, when we go to the Lord, when we chant Hare Krishna, but we are asking for some material benediction. It is like going to a king and asking for some ashes, right? When that person is able to benedict us with eternal blessing of eternal service to them, right? There is a very beautiful story also that is said that, what is that story that is said? One person, actually, it's a, it's a king's birthday, right? So the king says, anybody who is going, who, whatever anybody wants, I'm going to give today. Let them, let everybody in the kingdom come and ask me anything. I will give everything to, whatever they ask, I will give. So some people went and asked the king, I want a big bungalow and then they got a bungalow. And then somebody went and asked, I want, I want, you know, a lot of provisions, I don't want to work, I want one year full provisions, like that. So, so he got one year provisions. And then somebody said, I want lot of ornaments and someone said, I want my daughter to get married. So like that, so many, everything was fulfilled by the king. One person went and asked the king, oh king, I want to be your friend. And then the king was asking, okay, very strange request, but then he said, okay. Okay, I give you the opportunity to be my friend, okay? So friend means what? You go and come to their place very often and then you sit with them, you have lunch with them like that. So this man later, you know, a week later, he comes and calls the king, oh king, you're my friend. I want you to come to my home for lunch. And then the ministers get worried, oh my God, he lives in a chopuri. How can the king go and have his meals in a chopuri with, you know, man with, you know, ragged clothes and all that? And there is no place to go to his home only. So what did they do, the ministers? Okay, the king says, okay, next week, Wednesday, I'm coming to your home for lunch. And then in this one week's time, what happens? Ah, the entire, there is a big palace made for this friend. Then, you know, what will he cook? You know, the king will come and what will he eat? There will be nothing in the home. So nice provisions were supplied and then, you know, the king cannot come and sit with the beggar and eat something, resented. So nice, fine, fine jewelry ornaments, everything was provided not only for the friend but also for his entire family members. And not only that, nice roads were built from the palace to the, this, this person's palace, right? So that the king comes comfortably, has his lunch there with the friend comfortably, spends the day with him nicely and then goes back, right? And while in the meanwhile, what does the friend gain? The friend has gained everything. Just because he's become the friend of the king, he's gained everything, he's gained wealth, he's gained prosperity, he's gained, he's gained, you know, all the material benedictions have come to him and he's also gained personal time with the king. Because it was very intelligent to ask for the right thing. Similarly, our, when we chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra, right? If we seek for service to the Lord, right? When we render service to the Lord, then all of the other opulences or all of the other things that we consider are very important for us, right? Whether it is opulence or whether it is bliss or happiness, we do everything so that we get some happiness, right? In this world, right? We are always Anandamay Abhyasa, we're always doing some, doing something that will give us happiness, right? But if we make the Lord our friend, if we, if we make the Lord our master, if we want to serve the Lord, then what happens? The Lord will benedict us with the, all the kinds of bliss and happiness if we want. Otherwise, all our endeavors to, to, to become happy and blissful in this material world will only end up with frustration, right? So these are, these are nice stories which are, which are told by our senior devotees, our Acharyas. So that we know what we want to ask the Lord, right? Mama Janmanee Janmanishwade Bhavatad Bhaktir Ahitukitwee. I don't want to ask for wealth, I don't want to ask for attraction from the opposite sex. I don't want to ask for name fame glory, na dhannam na janam, no, no following, no wealth, na dhannam na janam na sundarin. I don't want attraction from the opposite sex. Kavita Amva Jagadeeshakami, oh Lord, I don't want even, I don't even want name fame glory. I don't want Kavita, name fame glory. Mama Janmanee Janmanishwade Life After Life, there is only one thing what I want, what is that? Mama Janmanee Janmanishwade Bhavatad Bhaktir Ahitukitwee. I simply want to serve you life after life, birth after birth, right? If we don't perfect our lives, then the only benediction that we want to seek the Lord, right? Even when our Brahma, he became Haridha Stakkur, right? He wanted to, he wanted the Lord to give him punishment because he, he did not, he did not know that Krishna is the supreme lord. He got bewildered, he wanted to test the Lord. He took the calves and the coward boys and he stole them in the, you know, and kept them in the Brahmaloka. And then he saw that Krishna has actually expanded himself into the calves and the coward boys and of course, when Krishna does something, it's not just to teach a lesson to Brahmaji, so many other purposes were also fulfilled. Like so many gopis wanted Krishna as their son. So in this way Krishna expanded into so many coward boys and, and all the mothers, all the gopis became happy to become the, become Krishna's mother for one year. They, even the cows became very happy because Krishna has expanded into the calves also. But then Brahmaji was feeling very, very guilty. Oh my God, did I want to test the Lord, is he is indeed the Lord or not? I tested the Lord, so he begged forgiveness and he wanted the Lord to give him a punishment so that he does not get into a hanka, right? So he asked the Lord, give me any, give me any punishment, let me come back to this material world. But then give me one benediction that whatever I may come as, right? I should never forget you, that is the benediction he asked. That is why Chaitanya Mahaprabhu said, okay, you will be born in a Mohammedan family, you will be born in a low-class family. Yet you will never forget me, you will always remember me and you will be glorified as Nama Acharya. And that is why Brahmaji, he became Haridha Stakkur, right? He was okay to be born in a low-class family, he was okay to be, you know, outcast, you know, a person who's outcast, who's not, who's not allowed to enter into the Jagannath temple, all that was okay with him. But he only asked the Lord, Lord, I should never forget you, right? That's what is the prayer of all the devotees of the Lord. Mama Janmanee Janmanishwade Bhavatad Bhaktir Ahitukitwee. I eternally want to be engaged in your service, life after life. Yeah, Sudha Mathaji, please read. Oh son of Maharaja Nanda Krishna.
Hare Krishna Mahaprabhu.
Oh sorry, fourth verse, once again. Yeah, oh Almighty Lord.
Oh Almighty Lord, I have no desire to accumulate wealth, nor do I desire beautiful women, nor do I want any number of followers. I only want your cautious,无私 service, birth after birth.
Okay, you can read five also.
Oh son of Maharaja Nanda Krishna, I am your eternal survivor, yet somehow or the other I have fallen into the ocean of birth and death. Please pick me up from this ocean of death and place me as one of the atoms at your lotus feet. Thank you, Mathaji, Hare Krishna.
Thank you so much. So Ayinanda Tanuja Kinkaram, Patitamam Vishamee Bhavambudo. Patitam means to fall down, right? I am the most fallen, patitamam, where have we fallen down? Vishamee Bhavambudo, we have fallen down into this Bhavasagar, right? Ayinanda Tanuja Kinkaram, Patitamam Vishamee Bhavambudo. Kripaya Tavapada Pankaja. What is that? Kripaya Tavapada Pankaja, stitha dhuli. Stitha dhuli means please put me as a dust in your lotus feet. Stitha dhuli sadarsham vichin taya. Right, somehow I have, I have fallen down, right? I've forgotten my position as your servant and I've fallen down into this material world. Kindly pick me up from this ocean, right? I cannot swim across on my own endeavor, it is not possible. But kindly pick me up and place me as a dust at your lotus feet. That is the, this is the prayer by Chaitanya Mahaprabhu who's come in the mood of a devotee. So he's telling us, what does this mission means what? What should be our prayer, what should our prayer be for? What should we ask the Lord? What is it that is worthwhile asking the Lord, right? We have fallen down, oh Lord, please pick me up and place me, place me like an, place me like a, place me as a dust at the, at your lotus feet. So this is the prayer of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Okay, and then sixth one, oh my Lord, Sri Priya Mathaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mathaji, pranams.
Pranam.
Sixth one, Namathaji.
Oh my Lord.
Oh my Lord, when, when will my eyes be decorated with tears of love flowing constantly when I chant your holy name? When will my voice choke up and when will the hairs of my body stand on end at the restoration of your name?
Yeah, so this is, from this stage it is bhava. When will my eyes be decorated? Ayinanda Tanuja Kinkaram, Patitamam Vishamee Kripaya Tavapada Pankaja, Stitha Dhuli Sadarsham Vichin Taya. That was last verse. Now Nayyanam Galadashru Daraya, when will tears flow down from my eyes? Nayyanam Galadashru Daraya, Badanam Gadgada Rudaya Agira. Pulakair Nishitam Bappukada Tavanama Grane Pavishthi. When will all these symptoms manifest in me when I recite your name? So these are the stages of bhava, that will occur in us when we chant sincerely by the mercy of Gurman Goranga. Okay, next one, oh Govinda.
Oh Govinda, feeling your separation, I'm considering a moment to be like twelve years or more. Tears are flowing from my eyes like torrent of rains and I'm feeling all vacant in the world in your absence.
Great, so this is ashakti, ashakti means I cannot remain without the Lord, right? So initially it was, I'm fallen down. Ayinanda Tanuja Kinkaram, Patitamam Vishamee Bhavambudo. Kripaya Tavapada Pankaja, Stitha Dhuli Sadarsham Vichin Taya. Please place me as a dust at your lotus feet. Then Nayyanam Galadashru Daraya, Badanam Gadgada Rudaya Agira. Pulakair Nishitam Bappukada Tavanama Grane Pavishthi. When will tears flow down from my eyes, right? Then what is the next verse? Ayinanda Tanuja Kinkaram, Patitamam Vishamee Bhavambudo. Kripaya Tavapada Pankaja, Stitha Dhuli Sadarsham Vichin Taya. Nayyanam Galadashru Daraya, Badanam Gadgada Rudaya Agira. Pulakair Nishitam Bappukada Tavanama Grane Pavishthi. And then now it is complete separation, bhava stage. Yuga Itam Nimeshena Chakshushar Pravrisha Itam. Shunya Itam Jagatsarvam Govinda Virehenamit. Right, in Govinda Viraha, that means in separation from Govinda, I am finding one moment to be like twelve years or more. That is bhava stage, where I'm experiencing extreme separation from the Lord. And then the last verse is saying. Ashli Shiva Padra Tam Pinistuma, A Darshanan Marmahatam Karotva. Yata Thatha Vidadatu Lampatoh, Mat Prananathastu So Evena Para. Ashli Shiva Padra Tam Pinistuma. Oh Krishna, whether you embrace me by your presence, right? A Darshanan, even if you don't give me your darshan and you want to, and you want to mysteriously hide somewhere, marmah. Marmah means mysteriously hide somewhere and not give me a darshan. Yata Thatha Vidadatu Lampatoh, whatever you want, you may do, but you are my prananath. You're my unconditional master, life after life. I will eternally serve you, whatever you may do to me. Whether you want to embrace me, whether you want to leave me alone, whatever you want to do, you may do, but you are my worshipful Lord, unconditionally like that. Yeah, so hold read, Sri Priya Mathaji, you can complete it, yeah.
I know no one but Krishna as my Lord and he shall remain so even if he handles me roughly by his embrace or makes me broken-hearted by not being present before me. He is completely free to do anything and everything for he is always my worshipful Lord, unconditional. Hare Krishna, thank you.
Hare Krishna, thank you. So this is the mission of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, taking us from the level of Shraddha to Krishna Prema, right? Shraddha, with a little bit of faith we chant, we start chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. And then what do we do? We associate with devotees in the Brahmortha chanting. We have close to twenty devotees who join us every day in the morning. What are we doing? We are chanting in the association of devotees, that is Sadhusanga. And then what are we doing? Bhajanakriya, Bhajanakriya is the chanting is only Bhajanakriya. The, all the services that we do, right? From Shravanam Kirtanam Vishnu Smaranam Archanam Vandanam Dasam Sakkam Apmanivedanam, then Ava Angas of Bhakti, they're all Bhajanakriya. When we do the Bhajanakriya in Sadhusanga, then what happens? Our anartas get cured, our anartas get, you know, anartas leave our heart, right? Anartanivriti, it goes away from our heart. When the anartanivriti, right? Because when we chant not accumulate wealth, not to Because when we chant not accumulate wealth, not desiring beautiful women, not desiring followers, but only for devotional service, in that mood, when we are chanting Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Mama janmuni janmuni shware bhavata bhaktir ahi tukit vay. I simply want your devotional service unto your lotus feet, life after life. In this way, when we continue to chant, 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 then what happens? Nishtha will be there in our heart. At that time, what happens? Whatever be the circumstance, right? Whether we are happy, whether we are sad, whether we are suffering, whether we are enjoying, whether we are experiencing heat or we are experiencing cold, does not matter, we will not give up our sadhana at any cost. That is the stage of nishtha, firm faith in chanting Hare Krishna, being and knowing well and understanding and realizing. If simply chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra will give me my desired success of Krishna prema, that is nishtha. And after that, we will have the stage of ruchi, asakti, bhava and prema, where one experiences all these symptoms of hair standing on end, tears flowing down from the eyes. And then one experience so much separation from the Lord that, you know, if the Lord, you know, even one second seems like twelve years. And then finally, oh Lord, doesn't matter whether you are here, whether I'm in the material world or I'm in the hellish planets or in the spiritual world, does not matter, right? Wherever I am, I simply want to serve you and in a way that pleases you, right? I don't, I have no tinge of sense gratification. I don't even want the sense gratification of association with you. I simply want to serve you selflessly wherever I am, wherever you place me. Right, wherever you place me, I'm happy to serve you in whatever capacity you want me to serve, wherever I am. So that is the highest stage of Krishna prema, right? We also always think, at this point, we always think about the gopis, who are willing to give the dust of their feet to Krishna to cure Krishna's momentary headache and yet they are willing to go to hellish planets for millions of lifetimes. If that gives pleasure to Krishna, then I am willing to do anything. So that is the highest stage of Krishna prema. And the embodiment and the crown jewel of the gopi bhava is exhibited by Shrimati Radharani, right? And Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, who is giving this as our mood and mission. What is our mission? Our mission is to attain this level of love for Krishna, to attain Krishna prema. And he is speaking in the, giving the mood and the consciousness of Shrimati Radharani. Because this is the consciousness with which Radharani serves Krishna. And so Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is saying, this is the highest level of devotional service to Lord Sri Krishna, that is the level of Krishna prema. All right, so with this, we come to the end of teachings of Lord Chaitanya. We have understood the mission. So tomorrow we will go ahead with the next chapter, that is going to actually elaborate at several pastimes of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, which will increase our interest to study the teachings of Lord Chaitanya. And then we will start with chapter one, which is teachings of Lord Chaitanya to Rupa Goswami. So that one we will start. So the next, I think it will take about two, three days for us to complete this, very, very wonderfully written. So we should definitely go through this, right? Where we will also release some of the nice pastimes also, as given by Shlabhropat, Shlabhakti, no Thakur, like that, we'll release that. All right, so now let's come back to our Bhagavad Gita. Today we are studying chapter number five. Om namo Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om namo Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om namo Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Hare Krishna. So in chapter number four, we studied about transcendental knowledge, right? The first chapter was Arjuna Vishada Yoga. Arjuna was very confused, Arjuna was asking a lot of questions. Arjuna actually spoke very illogical words, but he was very confused. And in the second chapter Krishna summarizes the entire Bhagavad Gita, answering all of the questions of Arjuna. Actually Bhagavad Gita comes to an end at the end of the second chapter. But however, since Arjuna has more questions to ask on behalf of all of us, it continues without chapter wherein Krishna is explaining karma yoga. How should karma be performed? Karma nevadi kharasti ma phalishu kadachana, ma karma phala hetur gur ma te sangostu karmi. Do your work, do your duty according to your varna and aashrama, but don't be attached to the results. Rather give the, surrender that results to me, work for me. Ma manusmara yudhyacha, perform your duty but remember me. In that way Krishna summarizes the third chapter, which is karma yoga. And then Arjuna again asks Krishna, right? You are saying do your duty with knowledge, but then how can we do our duty? But if you're not attached to the results, then why would we have to do our duty? And then Krishna talks about his own incarnation. Janma karma chamee divyam, evam yo viti tatvata, ketva deham punarjanmanaiti, ma meti so Arjuna. So where Krishna actually is telling Arjuna that you perform your duty in consciousness of me, then what happens? You will come back to me and that is the result that you will get. Where this result or this destination, once you get, you will never again come back to this material world. So in this way transcendental knowledge was given by Krishna to Arjuna. And the most important verse of the fourth chapter also, which most of us would have memorized by now is, tadviti pranipathena pariprashneena sebaya, upadikshanti te nyanam, nyani na tatvadarshinaha. One should approach a bona fide spiritual master, humbly render service and inquire with a submissive mind and not in a challenging spirit, but inquire submissively because we want to apply those instructions in our life. In that mood when one inquires, then the guru actually gives, reveals the transcendental knowledge in our heart. And when such transcendental knowledge revealed in the heart, automatically it will become from nyana, it will become vijnana. And in that way we can practice that knowledge and that will transform our life, right? Otherwise, information we'll get from Google also, we'll get from any person. But if we have to get transformation in our life, then we have to hear from a bona fide spiritual master who comes from one of the four bona fide parampras and we have to inquire submissively and also render service. So in this way Krishna asks Arjuna to perform work but with transcendental knowledge, right? The transcendental knowledge means, what is the knowledge or what is the consciousness with which we are going to perform work? But then Arjuna is again, Arjuna is again asking some question. Arjuna is saying, okay Krishna, you have told me that you know I have to always remember you and then I have to fight my war or fight my war in the sense I have to perform my duty, right? I understood that I have to perform my duty and I have to fight this war and but I have to think of you. In this way I have to fight my war. But then, but then I'm, you know, I'm being forced to do certain things although I don't, I don't want to do certain things, right? For example, he's saying that, you know, I don't, I don't want to perform certain sinful things, but I'm driven to perform those things. Like that he asks Krishna, right? I have the knowledge, but I'm not able to, I'm not able to do what I want to do, right? And then Krishna says lust, lust is the main reason why they are driven into performing some sinful actions. And lust, anger and greed, these are the three gates to hell, like that he explains. And then, and then in the last verse of the fourth chapter of the Bhagavad Gita, right? Krishna actually talks about tasmat, jnana sambutam, khritstam, jnana sinatmanam, chittvayam, samshayam, yogam, attistu, tistu, bharat. Again Krishna is telling Arjuna, right? The doubt that has arisen in your heart is because of ignorance. And how can they be, how can they be destroyed? They have to be destroyed with weapon of knowledge, right? And that knowledge, how to apply that knowledge while performing action? Now Krishna is going to elaborate again in the fifth chapter, which is called karma yoga, but performing the action in Krishna consciousness. That's what we want to study today. This is, the third chapter was karma yoga and the fourth chapter was transcendental knowledge. So the fifth chapter is basically combining both. That means I'm going to perform my karma, I'm going to perform my karma in a yoga. Yoga means what? In connection with the supreme personality of God. And how can I do that? When I apply this transcendental knowledge, which Krishna has given me in the fourth chapter, when I combine three and four, then I am getting to understand here, how do I perform my work in transcendental knowledge, right? Karma yoga, action in Krishna consciousness. Okay, let's move ahead. Om namo Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om namo Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om namo Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Chapter five, karma yoga, action in Krishna consciousness. Okay, Sindhu Mathaji, go ahead. Arjunavacha.
Hare Krishna, pranams.
Pranam.
Arjunavacha, five point one. Sanyasham karma nam Krishna, punar yogam chasam shashi. Yet shreya etayor ekam, tanme bruhi sunishchitam. Arjunavacha, Arjuna said, sanyasham renunciation, karma nam of all activities. Krishna o Krishna, puna again, yogam devotional service. Also samshashi you are praising, yet which shreya is more beneficial, etayoho of these two, ekam one. That, that me unto me bruhi please tell, sunishchitam definitely. Translation and purport by Divine Grace Sheila Propath, Sheila Propath Kichai. Arjuna said, oh Krishna, first of all, you asked me to renounce work and then again you recommend work with devotion. Now will you kindly tell me definitely which of the two is more beneficial? Of what? In this fifth chapter of the Bhagavad Gita, the Lord says that work in devotional service is better than dry mental speculation. Devotional service is easier than the latter because being transcendental in nature, it frees one from reaction. In the second chapter, preliminary knowledge of the soul and its entanglement in the material body were explained. How to get out of this material engagement by bhuti yoga or devotional service was also explained therein. The third chapter, it was explained that a person who is situated on the platform of knowledge no longer has any duties to perform. And in the fourth chapter, the Lord told Arjuna that all kinds of sacrificial work culminate in knowledge. However, at the end of the fourth chapter, the Lord advised Arjuna to wake up and fight. Being situated in perfect knowledge, therefore by simultaneously expressing the importance of both work in devotion and inaction and knowledge, Krishna has perplexed Arjuna and confused this determination, determination. Arjuna understands that renunciation in knowledge involves cessation of all kinds of work performed and sense activities. But if one performs work in devotional service, then how is work stopped? In other words, he thinks that sanyasa or renunciation in knowledge should be altogether free from all kinds of activity because work and renunciation appear to him to be incompatible. He appears not to have understood that work in full knowledge is non-reactive and it's therefore the same as inaction. He inquires therefore whether he should cease work altogether or work with full knowledge. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I was unmuted. Yeah, so before we actually studied the purports of Shilpa Propath, if we just hear the word inaction, you would also think, what does inaction mean? Inaction means not perform any action, right? To just, you know, lays around, that's what we think is inaction, which is, which is what we understood as per our, our English dictionary, isn't it? That's what it says, inaction means don't perform any action, right? But, but in the spiritual parlance, Propath explains very beautifully what is inaction. Inaction does not mean not to take any action, right? Sometimes not taking any action amounts to vikarma. That means when we are supposed to act, if we don't act but rather lays around, then not doing the duty is also vikarma, is also sinful, right? At the same time, like we saw in this pastime of, Devanand Pandit, right? Devanand Pandit was a very, 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 very exalted Bhagavatam preacher, right? Once he was giving Bhagavatam class and Shiva Stakur was present in his audience. And generally his classes are so ecstatic that Shiva Stakur is a pure devotee, though he exhibited this symptoms of, you know, that nayanam galadashru dharaaya, badanam gadgada rudhaya agira, viswa, right? Tears are flowing down from the eyes and, you know, hairs are standing on end. So he was experiencing those symptoms. And then what happened? Devanand Pandit's disciples, they thought that, oh, he is creating a disturbance in our, in our guru's lecture. So they just picked him up and placed him outside, right? And then our Devanand Pandit, he saw this, but he did not do anything. He continued with his lecture, right? But Shiva Stakur also, like he was, he felt a little bad, but then he went, he just got up and went away. He did not, he did not curse or he did not think any bad, bad thing about Devanand Pandit. But who thought, who thought this to be an offense? Mahaprabhu took this as an offense because how can he actually do this to my devotee? Shiva Stakur, how could? And Devanand Pandit did not do anything, he was only giving his lecture, right? So only servants actually put him out, but a leader is responsible for the actions, actions of his servants. He did not say anything, he did not ask them not to stop doing that, right? Sometimes inaction also constitutes a karma. That means inactions in this case also causes vaishnavaprad, right? Sinful activity at least, like Krishna says, chipparam bhavati dharmaatma, shashvat chantin migachati, konthia prati janihi, namie bhakti apranashati. Krishna tells that sinful activities also, I will easily relieve somebody. But if one commits vaishnavaprad, very, very difficult. For me, I cannot do anything in the case of vaishnavaprad. We also know Ambresh and Druvasamuni, right? When Druvasamuni actually tried to attack Ambresh, Ambresh Maharaj, now Lord sent a sudarshin chakra, which destroyed the demon of course, but then it went behind Druvasamuni. Then Druvasamuni went and pleaded with Lord Vishnu, oh, please take back your sudarshin chakra. And Vishnu said, I cannot do anything, my sudarshin has actually left me. You know, you are the only person who can save you is Ambresh Maharaj. So in this way, the Lord, the Lord cannot forgive. Even if the vaishnavaprad does not take aprad, the Lord takes aprad, right? In this case, Shiva Stakur did not take anything, did not take any offense. But the Lord took offense and Devanand Pandit actually lost his taste for Bhagavatam. Of course, he continued giving Bhagavatam sessions, but was not feeling that ecstasy. But once what happened, Bakreshur Pandit had come to Navatvee to do harinam sankirtan. He did harinam sankirtan, seventy-two hours continuously, three days. At that time, Devanand Pandit came there and then he was, he actually assisted Bakreshur Pandit. Why? You know, he picked up a stick and then he ensured that nobody disturbs Bakreshur Pandit. He protected Bakreshur Pandit, Bakreshur Pandit was very happy that Devanand Pandit actually helped him in his harinam sankirtan to progress without any disturbance. And then he felt happy and he became pleased with Devanand Pandit. And when Chaitanya, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is the supreme lord, he's there in everybody's heart, right? He's not different from Krishna. And when he saw that Bakreshur Pandit is very happy with Devanand Pandit, he actually revealed that knowledge to Devanand Pandit that you have actually committed an offense to Shiva Stakur. So go and beg forgiveness from Shiva Stakur. In this way, the Lord revealed in his heart and then he went and begged forgiveness from Shiva Stakur and then, you know, he became, he came back to his, to his level of devotional service. So in this way, when we, when we, why did I quote this? Inaction also sometimes can cause great harm in our progress of devotional service. That is why we should know, right? Krishna says, na mata smriti nyanam opohanamcha. If you are very sincere and determined, Krishna will give us intelligence, what to do, what not to do, how to do, how much to do, how not to do, right? We need that intelligence. Otherwise, sometimes in ignorance also, if you commit vaishnavaprad, like there's one more pastime of Rupa Goswami, right? He was just enjoying the leela of Radha and Krishna and he was just smiling away. And then there was one person, you know, who was, who was like, whose body was like bent in, you know, astavakra, right? His body was bent in some eight places. And then when he saw Rupa Goswami laughing, he thought that Rupa Goswami is laughing at me. And then Rupa Goswami lost his vision of the transcendental world of Shri Radha and Krishna. And then, you know, why I'm saying this is, we may not even have the intent, but vaishnavaprad is so, vaishnavaprad is so, you know, has the, has the effect of, you know, cutting the root of our bhakti creeper. Of course, Rupa Goswami is very swayed, elevated, right? So he immediately knew and he was guided, so immediately he called everybody for prasadham and this one person did not come. And he understood that this person, you know, thought that he was laughing at him, of course he begged forgiveness. And he also told that, you know, I was not even looking at you, right? So there was no reason why he should laugh at you. So in that way, it was, it was settled by the grace of Guru Vangoranga. But those are like, you know, lessons for us to learn, that if we commit vaishnavaprad, then what can happen to us, right? If something can happen like this, Rupa Goswami, who's the, you know, who understood the heart of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, shi chaitanya mano bishtham, stapi tam yena bhutale, right? To such Rupa Goswami, to such Devanand Pandit, right? Such inaction can cause so much of problem in devotional service. And what to speak of? Struggling sadhakas like us, right? It can apprude our bhakti, right? That's why we should be very careful, not just about our actions, but also when we are required to perform our duty, we should do our duty. That also becomes a detrimental factor in our bhakti. So that's why Arjuna is asking here to Krishna, I'm very confused. You are telling don't work, you are telling renounce everything, renounce the results of your work and then you are saying work and devotion. What is it that I'm supposed to do? Am I supposed to work or am I supposed to cease work altogether, right? You should always understand, Arjuna is also a pure devotee of the Lord. He is asking all these questions because we are taliyugavasis, mandamandam, sumandamatyo. Even after studying this, we are in so many doubts, right? When practical application comes, I should do this or I should do that, right? That's why Krishna, yeah, time and again he talks about guru in the vaishnava, coming in a bona fide disciples succession. The instructions that we receive from the guru or the guru's, siksha gurus also, coming in a bona fide disciples succession, their instructions are as potent as instructions of the Lord himself, right? You're not waiting for the Lord to personally come and give us instruction. Even if he personally comes, we will not recognize the Lord, like Duryodhana, right? Because our eyes are clouded with sense gratification, we cannot see the Lord, right? So when we get proper advice, when we get proper correction from our siksha gurus, from our diksha guru, from our senior devotees, we should take it in the right spirit. Such a person is investing time to correct me so that I can progress in devotional service, right? So in this way, Arjuna is inquiring from Krishna, what is it that I have to do? Tell me exactly. Okay, Vrshebanukanya Mathaji, go ahead, text number two. Okay, one five, we will, we will complete until fourth verse, yes.
Hare Krishna, Dhanrath Pranam, Mataji. Sanyasaha karma yoga cha, ni shreyasakaravu pou. Teyostu karma sanyasat karma yoga vishish yoga vishishyate. Synonym, Sri Bhavan, Sri Bhavanva, the personality of Godhead said. Sanyasaha, renunciation of work, karma yoga, karma yoga, work is, work in devotion. Cha also, ni. Ni shreyasakaravu. Leading to the path of liberation, udhva, both, yoga of the two. No, two, but karma, sanyasat in comparison to the renunciation of fruitivity work. Karma yoga, work in devotion, vishyate is better. Translation, translation by Sil Prabhupada. Prabhupada Kijay. The personality of Godhead replied, the renunciation of work and work in devotion are both good for liberation. But of the two, but, but of the two, work in devotional service is better than renunciation of work. Perpet. Fruitivity, fruity, fruity, frutive activities seeking sense gratification are cause of material bondage. As long as one is engaged in activities aimed in, aimed at improving the standard of bodily comfort. One is clear to transmigrate two different types of bodies thereby continuing material bondage perpetually. Simat Bhagavatam, five point five, five point five four six confirms this as follows. This as follows, namaha paramatmaha kurute vikrama.
No, 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 no. Nuunam pramattakuru te vikarma, yadindriya prithaya apranoti. Na saadhuman ye yataatmanoyam, asan apiklesha daaasa deha. Paravastavata bodhjato, yavanna jignyasataatmatatvam. Yavat kriyasavatidam manobai, karmaatmakam ye na sharira bandha. Evam manah karma vasam pranupte, avidyayaatmanupadiyamane. Prithirna yavan maivasudhdeva, na mutchate deha yogena taavat.
Thank you, Mataji. People are mad after sense gratification and they do not know that. Our present body, which is full of mystery, is a result of one's fruitivity activities in the past. Although this body is temporary, it is always giving one trouble in many ways. Therefore, to act for sense gratification is not good. One is considered to be a failure in life as long as he makes no inquiry about his real identity. As long as he does not know his real, his real identity. He has to work for fruitful, fruitful, fruitful results for sense gratification. And as long as one is engrossed in consciousness of sense gratification. One has to transmigrate from one body to another. Although the mind may be engrossed in fruity, fruitful activities and influenced by ignorance. One must develop a love for a devotional service to Vasudevah. Only then, only then can one have the opportunity, one has the opportunity to get out the bondage of material existence. Therefore, gnana means for knowledge that one is not, not this material body but spirit soul. Is not sufficient for liberation. One has to act in the status of spirit soul. Otherwise, there is no escape from material bondage. Action is Krishna consciousness is not, however, action on the fruitful. Mataji please, fruitful, fruitful platform. Activities performed in full knowledge strengthen one's advancement in, in real knowledge. Without Krishna consciousness, mere renunciation of fruitful activities does not actually purify the heart of a conditional soul. As long as the heart is not purified, one has to work on the fruitful platform. But action in Krishna consciousness, Krishna consciousness automatically helps one escape the. A results of fruitful action so that, so that one need not descend to the material platform. Therefore, action in Krishna consciousness is always superior to renunciation, which always entails to, is. Intens a risk of falling, risk of falling. Renunciation without Krishna consciousness is incomplete, as is confirmed by Sil Rupa Goswami in his Bhakti Rasamruth Sindhu.
Okay. Prapanchikataya buddhyaa hari sambhandivastunaha, mukshubiparityago, vairagyan falgu katyate.
Thank you, Mataji. When persons eager to achieve liberation, renounce things related to the supreme personality of Godhead. Thinking them to be material, their renunciation is called incomplete, incomplete. Renunciation is complete when it is in the knowledge that everything in existence belongs to the Lord. And that one should claim proprietorship over anything. One should understand that actually nothing belongs to anyone then situated in renunciation. One. In, everything belongs to Krishna. Everything should be employed in the service of Krishna. This perfect form of action is Krishna consciousness is far better than any amount of artificial renunciation by a sanyasi of the Mayavadi school.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mataji. Yeah, so, so here Prabhupada is actually telling in the purport very beautifully. You know, Krishna himself is saying that work in devotion is better than renunciation, right? Why? Because renunciation of work, when we renounce work, what do we do? We are just going to, we remain idle, right? And then we also saw how inaction also constitutes a karma. When you're supposed to do something, you don't do it and what happens? That becomes, that becomes a sinful activity, that can have reactions also. Right? And that is why Prabhupada quotes from a nectar devotion. Now wherein Prabhupada is saying, before that also Prabhupada is talking about, jnana or knowledge is not enough, right? That's what we talk, we spoke about the knowledge that is there in the head. It's no use, it's not sufficient liberation. Because we have all the knowledge, but we don't apply that knowledge, like the other day we were talking about mathematics formula. We know all the formula, but we don't know which format to apply for which problem. What is the use of knowing the formula, right? Only when we know to solve the problems, then only we can score mathematics paper, isn't it? Similarly, in the, in this exam of life, now only when we know, when we are able to apply the teachings of Bhagavad Gita in our life. Then only we can transform our life into according to the instructions of Bhagavad Gita. And that is why Prabhupada's purports come into a lot of help. Right? Prabhupada is saying here, one has to act in the status of the spirit soul. That means one has to act according to the knowledge received. Otherwise, there is no escape. And secondly, Prabhupada is also quoting Bhakti Rasamruth Sindhu. Wherein is saying, hari sambhandivastunaha, everything has to be utilized in the service of the Lord and that is actual renunciation. Otherwise, naiti, naiti, naiti is all artificial. Vairagyan falgu katyate, artificial renunciation is no use, right? Yukta vairagyan is what we have to practice. Anashatthi se vishayan, yatah upayunjataha, nirbandha Krishna sambande, yukta vairagam uchthe. Nirbandha, that means I am not attached to something, right? Only if this thing is there, I will do seva. If there is not there, I cannot do seva. No, we are not attached to any material object. Our service to the Lord is not dependent on anything, right? Only we have to have the desire and we will be empowered with all the resources that we have, that, that, that are required for the seva, right? So nirbandha and Krishna sambande, you use everything that is available, right? We don't say this is cannot be used, this cannot be used, no. Everything can be used in the service of the Lord and that intelligence one gets by the mercy of the Lord. And that kind of intelligence with which one uses everything in the service of the Lord, that is, that is what is called, nir, what is that? Yukta vairagam uchthe, nirbandha Krishna sambande, yukta vairagyan uchthe. Okay, let's move forward. Text number three. Moni Mala Mataji, go ahead. Nyeasannitya sanyasi. Eso nittya sanyasi, yo no dhrsti. Krishna kankshati. Nirdandoli, maha baho, sukhambandhatram utchate. Synonyms. Hare Krishna Mataji, Dhanrath Pranam. Gayo. Dhanrath. Tabbo, shol, stini, evshari shari, Mataji. Here should be known, sha he, nitya always, sanyasi, denouncer, ye who, na never. Dhrsti, abhosh, na nor, kankshati, desires, nirvasat, speak from all dualities. Hi, certainly, maha baho, oh mighty, armed one, sukhamb, happily, bandhat, from bondage, pramutchate, completely liberated, liberated. Parpa, parpa by Sheila Prabhupada. Translation, yes, Mataji. One who neither hates nor desires the fruits of his activities is known to be always denounced. Such a person liberated from all dualities easily overcomes material bondage and is completely liberated. Oh mighty and Arjuna, parpa. One who is fully in Krishna consciousness is always a denouncer because he feels neither hatred nor desire for the results of his actions. Such a denouncer dedicated to the transcendental loving service of the Lord is fully qualified in knowledge. Because he knows his constitutional position in his relationship with Krishna. He knows fully well that Krishna is the whole and that he is part and parcel of Krishna. Such knowledge is perfect because it is qualitatively and quantitatively correct. The concept of oneness with Krishna is incorrect because the part cannot be equal to the whole. Knowledge that one is one in equality yet different in quantity is correct. Transcendental knowledge leading one to become full in himself, having nothing to aspire to nor lament over. There is no duality in his mind because whatever he does, he does for Krishna. Being thus freed from the platform of dualities, he is liberated even in his material world. Pariwal Mataji, thanks a lot. Hare Krishna, thank you so much. Yeah, so who is an actual denouncer, right? Not and, not somebody who does not burn fire or not, somebody who does not, you know, get up and walk or, you know, somebody who is lazing around is not a person. Right? Who renounces, right? Who is an actual denouncer? We saw in the previous verse itself, yukta vairagyan. That means one who is utilizing everything in the service of the Lord, such a person is, is an actual denouncer. And Prabhupada also adds an additional point here, that one, one should also be from all dualities. One should be free from all the dualities, sitoshna, sukha dukkha da, right? And sukha or dukkha, right? We all know, we saw that, we also discussed that pastime, that, that particular story. Right? These two shall pass. I'll not, I'll not say that again here because of time. But you all know that, right? These two shall pass. If it is happiness, that also shall pass. If it is distress, that also shall pass. Just be, just like happiness, misery comes of its own accord, happiness also will come of its own accord. But what am I supposed to do in happiness and distress and dualities of life? Whether happiness or distress, I'm going to continue doing my service to the Lord, knowing well that I am part and parcel of the Lord. Namibha amsho jevaloke, jevabuta saratanaha, right? I am an amsho of the Lord and I'm going to serve the Lord in all situations. I'm not going to serve the Lord only in situations of happiness or sometimes we serve only when situations of distress, right? Saying that, oh, let this distress go away, like that. No, whether in happiness or distress, both will come and go, right? But in all situations, we should always serve the supreme personality of Godhead. And that is what is the instruction given by Lord Sri Krishna to Arjuna here, right? Accept all dualities and go ahead with your seva. Text number four. Sudha Mataji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mataji, pranam.
Hare Krishna, pranam.
Sangkya yoga, pratagpala, pravadantina pandita. Ekam apyastita samyak, ubhayo vindate palam. Synonyms, sangkya, analytical study of the material world. Yoga, work in devotional service, pratag different. Balaha, the less intelligent, pravadanti, say, na never. Pandita, the learned, ekam in one, api even, astita, being situated, samyak, complete, ubhayo of food. Vindate, enjoys, palam, the result. Translation and purpose by Divine Grace Sheila Prabhupada, Prabhupada Kijay. Only the ignorant speak of devotional service, karma yoga, has been different from the analytical study of the material world, sangkya. Those who are actually learned say that he who applies himself well to one of these parts achieves the results of both. Perpet. The aim of the analytical study of the material world is to find the soul of existence. The soul of the material world is Vishnu or the super soul. Devotional service to the Lord entails service to the super soul. One process is to find the root of the tree and the other is to water the root. The real student of sangkyi philosophy finds the root of the material world, Vishnu, and then in perfect knowledge engages himself in the service of the Lord. Therefore, in essence, there is no difference between the two because the aim of both is Vishnu. Those who do not know the ultimate end say that the purposes of sangkyi and karma yoga are not the same. But one who is learned knows, knows the unified aim in these different processes. Thank you, Mataji. Hare Krishna.
Thank you. Hare Krishna, yeah. So in the second chapter also, we see how first Krishna is explaining sangkyi yoga. Difference between body and the soul, right? Dehinosvinita deh ekomaram yobaram jara, tathdehan tarafpraptirir satramuyati. Jai temre deva kadachin, nayambutva bhavita vana boya. Ajo nitya shaashpatam yom pranona, hanyati hanyamani sharire. Right? Why are you grieving for the body? The body anyway has to die, right? Just like the summer and winter seasons come and go, happiness and distress will come and go for the body. They are all at a bodily platform. Here is tatrana muyati, a sober person is not bewildered by such change of body, by such change of situations, right? All that is sangkyi yoga. And what is karma yoga? Karma yoga is the application of the sangkyi yoga, right? When I perform my work, I should not perform in the bodily platform, right? So what is the unifying aim in these processes? Unifying aim is to understand who the Lord is by sangkyi yoga and in karma yoga to work according to that knowledge. Otherwise, sangkyi yoga is useless, right? We saw in the earlier verse also. That simply having the knowledge but not acting according to that knowledge is useless. Similarly, acting without connection with Krishna, right? Some people think, karma nevadi kara se mahavali shukadachana, that's all. I will continue working, 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 working. I will work twenty-four hours a day. Work is worship, like that, right? I will do my karm, right? And that is only worship. No, that is not worship, right? That is only a part of the worship. It depends on the consciousness with which we perform our work, whether it is worship or whether it is sense gratification, right? So, aada adura, right? In between both does not satisfy the principle. The unifying principle of connection with Krishna, working for the satisfaction of Krishna with proper knowledge and Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead. That is what is the determining factor, like that. All right, so here, okay, let's also do the next verse because that's also going to talk about, talk about sangkyi yoga. We'll complete, we'll end today's session with verse number five. Okay, Vrshebanukanya Mataji, go ahead. Yatsangkai prapyate sthanam, tad yogir apigam yate, yes, go ahead.
Yatsangkai prapyate sthanam, tad yogir apigam yate. Ekam sangkham, ekam sangkhamcha yogamcha, yeha prasyati, saprayati. Synonyms, yet, water, what, sangkyo. By means of sangkyi philosophy, prayate is achieved.
Prapyate.
Prapyate is achieved, sthanam, sthanam, place, that, yoga. And be by devotional service, api also. Gam yate, one can attain ekam, one, sangkham. Analytically study, cha and yogam, action in devotion and yeha. Cha and yeha, one who, and pasyati, sees, saha, he, pasyati, actually sees. Translation, translation by Sil Prabhupada, Prabhupada Kijay. One who knows that the position reached by means of analytical study can also be attained by devotional service. And who therefore sees analytical study, analytical study and devotional service to be on the same level. See things as they are, see things as they are, perpet. The real, the real purpose of philosophical research is to find the ultimate goal of life. Since the ultimate goal of life is self-realization, there is no difference between the conclusion reached by the two processes. By sangkyi philosophical research, one comes to the conclusion that a living entity is not a part of, part and parcel of the material world. But of the supreme spirit whole consequently, the spirit soul has nothing to do with the material world. His action must be in some relation with the supreme. When he acts in Krishna consciousness, he is actually in his constitutional position. In the first process, sangkyi, one has to become detached from matter. And in the devotional yoga process, one has to attach himself to the work of Krishna consciousness. Effectually, both process are the same, although superficially, one process appears to involve detachment. And the other process appears to involve attachment. Detachment from matter and attachment to Krishna are one and the same. One who can see this sees things as they are.
Yeah, that's what is very important here, right? One who sees both. One who sees both are seen, right? So here uh very importantly, Prabhupada is uh very beautifully explained, it does not require any explanation. But the understanding in one line is detachment from matter, like we always talk about inverse, inversely proportional, right? That means our attachment to Krishna and our attachment to material things cannot be directly proportional. The more we get attached to Krishna automatically, um uh, parashashaktir, no, no, what is that? Right? That means automatically we will develop detachment to all the material things. The more our attachment to Krishna increases, the more our detachment to the material things will automatically develop. By experiencing a higher taste, we will give up, automatically we will give up all the lower taste. And that is a formula given by Krishna himself, right? You attach yourself more to Krishna, automatically our attachment to all the uh material things, automatically it will disappear. And that is the formula that is given by Krishna himself. And one who sees this, he sees this, sees things as they are. Because when we evaluate one, automatically we will evaluate the other. No need to evaluate our detachment to ma- matter and attachment to Krishna separately. If one increases, if attachment to Krishna increases automatically, uh detachment to matter also increases. If our attachment to matter increases, automatically our detachment to Krishna also increases, right? So in this way, we don't have to negate anything in our life. Simply we develop, need to develop our attachment for Krishna. In this way, when we develop our attachment for Krishna, our attachment for all the other material things, uh non-burnable things of this material world given by Maya, which are illusion, automatically reduces. Hare Krishna, so with that we will end our Bhagavad Gita session today. Uh Granth Raj, Srimad Bhagavad Gita Ki, jai. So devotees can very nicely switch on your cameras and give darshan now. We'll quickly do a two-minute Hari Nam Sangkirkan. Jai, Hare Krishna, oh my god, wonderful. Okay, half the population have decided to show their darshan. So let me call out, Rishabhanu Kanya Mataji, thank you so much for joining and Rajneesh Prabhu, Rohini Mataji, Karpagalli Mataji, Sri Priya Sampath Mataji. Harjit Mataji, Hare Krishna, thank you. Sindhu Mataji, Sarvagopashri Mataji, Mala Mataji, Manamali Prabhu, Sneha Prabha Mataji, Mani Mala Mataji, Sudha Mataji. Okay, all our regular audience have very nicely given their darshan today. Eight, seven days for Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's appearance, right? So we're getting mercy of all the Vaishnavas. Hare Bhol, Hare Krishna, so thank you all very much. Uh if devotees want to share anything or um uh share your realizations or have any queries, you may raise your hand. Okay, I can see Rishabhanu Kanya Mataji's hand up. Okay, everyone can invite themselves now. So quickly, uh if anyone has to share anything, we can uh take that, otherwise we can end the session. We meet tomorrow morning, five AM for Brahmanurtha chanting. And then twelve o'clock, we will continue with our teachings of Lord Chaitanya, very interesting section that we're going to study tomorrow. Please do join us at twelve o'clock for tomorrow's teachings of Lord Chaitanya. And fifth chapter is very, very practical chapter. How can we apply the principle of Krishna consciousness in our day-to-day lives? Very important sections of Bhagavad Gita and TLC, please do join us tomorrow. Thank you very much, Jagat Guru Shilpa Prabhupada Ki, jai. Ekadishi is on twentieth, if I'm right, once a day, I'll tell you. Hmm twentieth is, twentieth March, Wednesday is Ekadishi. Yeah, yeah, Sangkya Yoga is Jnana, right? That means the knowledge, the, the philosophical knowledge, understanding of which is also related to Bhakti. It's not, you're not rejecting Sangkya Yoga, right? Kapila taught um this uh Kapila taught to his mother Deva Huti, right? Sangkya knowledge is knowledge of what is the body, what is the soul, right? That's why the entire second chapter, initial part, uh is Sangkya Yoga where Krishna tells Arjuna. And then the verse which talks about um uh you know, the body is always perishable, the soul is eternal. Uh you know. Right? When the body dies, the soul does not die, right? In this way, there's so many verses. All those verses are Sangkya verses. Why? Because they help us develop, develop that knowledge. Why we should not be so much concerned with the loss of the body, right? But then what is Karma Yoga? How is it different from Sangkya Yoga? Karma Yoga is action in that knowledge, right? We, we spoke about the maths formula the other day, I don't know, Mani Mala Mataji, whether you were there in that particular session, right? We studied all the maths formulas, but will we pass the maths exam? If you know the formula only, no. We will pass the exam when we know which formula to apply in which problem, right? Yeah, yeah. Correct, so that is what it is. So Sangkya Yoga is knowledge, right? Lot of knowledge is there in our head, but we, we need to understand which knowledge, that's why Arjuna is also asking, right? You are saying renounce the, renounce the actions and then you are saying, uh you know, work in devotion, what should I do? Right? That is actually translation of Sangkya Yoga into Karma Yoga. How do I apply this knowledge in my day-to-day life? As a Shatriya, when I'm performing my duty of fighting, how do I apply this transcendental knowledge? That's why Krishna says, ma, manus mara yudhyacha. Right? We are all fighting our battle with Maya every day, when we go out, even at home, right? We are fighting our battle with Maya at all times. So we have to apply that Sangkya, no Sangkya Yoga, knowledge which Krishna has given and practical application is what Krishna is describing in Karma Yoga. Right? We perform Karma Yoga with proper knowledge, which is Sangkya Yoga and that results in our performing activities in a Krishna conscious way. Always remember Krishna, never forget Krishna, that is the thing, okay?
Thank you, Mataji, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Hare Krishna, yes, Teval Mataji.
Hare Krishna Mataji, Dharmadham. And Mataji, I have a question about the sinful reactions. We get a body because of our past karmas and then there is those stages of, you know, sins that premature, mature and all that. And again, we say that after this birth, I mean after our death, we go to Yamlok and then we suffer the reactions of our sinful actions. So do we have to suffer both the times after going to Yamlok also and then taking another body and then, you know, those sins are fructified? So is it twice?
Depends on the extent of sinful reactions that we have accumulated. So if our sinful reactions are such that, you know, uh because in this material world, so sitoshna, sukha, dukkha da. Happiness and distress comes alternately. But if you have committed so much sins that you are not entitled to any happiness, then we will go to the hellish planets where we cannot enjoy any happiness burning in that oil or, you know, you know, kind of, there is no happiness at all in the hellish planets. It is pure misery. So it depends on how much of bad karma we've, we have done, right? Uh that whether we have to suffer first completely and then we come to this material world and you know, everybody would have done some pious activities. So here we, you know, we come to the material world and again, uh you know, we, we get a little bit of happiness. Uh you know, so-called absence of suffering which we think is happiness and then we keep rotating. Actually, the, you know, the intricacies of Karma Yoga are very difficult, you know, when what can take place, right? Uh sometimes, you know, uh the, the bijam, what is there is bijam or kutam, sometimes we need not even get reactions. Because when we take to the process of devotional service, it's already burnt away, right? But those which are already realized, right? Which are about to come, falon mukam, right? Which is about to come, those things will, will automatically happen. That way, uh that is why we see that even devotees undergo some kind of suffering, right? Uh sometimes it is said that uh even those uh you know, which are um already fructified, even that can be removed. Uh probably depends on the extent of how much we're able to please Guru and Goranga to that extent, right? Uh so yeah, very difficult to understand, but yeah, but I've heard that if somebody is so sinful that is not entitled to any kind of uh happiness, then they directly go to the hellish planets where they completely suffer like that. And then once they suffer, then they get a human body and when you get a, you know, not even a human body, whatever may be the body depending on their karmas, right? And then they get evolved, they evolved, they get evolution evolved from, you know. Become human being and then it is always a mixture of happiness and distress.
Okay, okay. Hare Krishna Mataji, Dharmadham.
Shilpa Prabhupada Ki, jai. Granth Raj, Srimad Bhagavad Gita Ki, jai. Granth Raj, teachings of Lord Chaitanya Ki, jai. Jai, Natai Gaurpema Nande, Hari Hari Bhol. Thank you, Hare Krishna.